I'm now calling this meeting to order, please stand with us, we'll be led in prayer by Alderman Flores. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Alderman at large George Payne.
Dear heavenly father, we come before you tonight, dear lord, and we ask that you give us discernment and wisdom as we conduct the city's business tonight, father. And then we ask that as the children return back to school last weekend, this week, that you watch over them and watch over their families, father. And that you be with the residents of Florida right now, as they're going in Georgia, as they're going through what's left of Hurricane Debbie. And we ask that you continue to bless this city and its citizens in your precious sense, and pray Christ Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the July sixteen, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
I'll make that motion, second.
We have a motion, Alderman Jerome, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a planning commissioner appointment, I understand it's Alderman Hoots Ward Two. Um, just one thing I want everybody to think about that when we do, I know we don't have a freak, it's not frequent that we're changing commissioners. And I'm just making a suggestion, however y'all want to do it, I just thought it may be a good idea when we have a, a new commissioner, maybe for the full board to meet them. Uh, before we do an appointment, cause you know, does, the full board does have, even though it's your ward, and we certainly respect, you know, your choice and your ward. Uh, but the full board does have to vote to put someone on the planning commission, and when they're put on there, they're on there. So they're, they're on there for the rest of the term. So I just thought it may be a good, whether we do it this time or, or not, maybe it's a good idea for the full board to meet the people.
Uh, he was gonna be here tonight, but he had to work over, so it, I mean, it was a complication there, but.
Okay, so however y'all want to do it, if y'all want to just, you know, if y'all want to approve them tonight, I don't know the person. I would like to know the people that we're putting on there as well, as we said, uh, when we have a planning meeting, we have a lot, a lot of, uh, private investors and developers that are here. Uh, for the first time, you know, to see our operations, so they're also a representative, representation of the city of South Haven. And a lot of times, these are people that we've recruited for a long time to get them here, so when they're, when they're here to see their deal get approved, it's, it's a big deal. So we'd like to know who the people are that are, that are, you know, that are representatives.
First I want, I want to point is Barrett Wilkinson, he's been around here his whole life, grew up here, going to school here, actually, South Haven Elementary.
Okay.
Highway Baptist, you know, I mean, you know, he's been around forever.
So you don't, you feel, you feel solid about that, and you would recommend that to your peers and everything?
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's good.
Okay, well, it's up to y'all, we approve them tonight, just in the future, just a suggestion, that's all it is. Um, that when we change them, that it may be a good idea for executive session for them to come meet the full board, and then at the next meeting, vote on that to, to appoint them. But that's all I got. So is there a motion to approve this commissioner tonight?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. Next on our agenda is the property casualty insurance renewal. This policy renews on July first, so I need to explain to y'all a couple of things that we may want to look at in the future. July one is the fiscal year date for, for state government and a lot of operations in Mississippi. So it puts the underwriters, when our broker goes out and, uh, looks for other quotes, uh, the clock is ticking, it's hard for them to get the quotes back on July one. So first of all, I questioned them about this, because I don't want to come before you making a recommendation that's late. I'm never late, I've never been late, one time here in the city, and nor will I ever be. Um, they were late getting it to us, and so I questioned that, that's when they explained that. So my suggestion is so we don't get in this situation again, is possibly extending the renewal date. We could do that and make it coincide with our budget year. Alderman Gallagher, you're very familiar with the, the importance of expiration dates. I think it would be good for the city to coincide with our budget, and what we would do is pay a supplemental bill to cover us from July one to October one of twenty-five. And then that way, our renewal would be on October one instead of July one, which lessens the load on the underwriters, it gives them time to get the, the quotes to us quicker. But that's something that, we don't have to make that decision tonight, but I'm telling you that because we're late, and I don't ever want to bring a proposal to you that's late, I didn't make it late.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, extend the, the agreement until the end of our fiscal year, which is September thirtieth.
Yeah, I, well, what I would like to ask is, let me get the premium, exact premium number, we can, anytime between now and next July, we can do that. That is my recommendation, but let's get through the budget first and find out exactly what that dollar amount is, and then I'll come back before you, but I do appreciate that. But anyway, so I want you to know why we're late, because this policy did renew on July one, we've not been without coverage. Um, and the numbers, uh, that we got back for, this is everything, this is anything that's not health insurance, this is all your, um, your physical, uh, property insurance for all the buildings. All the assets, all the vehicles in South Haven, it's our liability insurance, our workers' comp, all that stuff there. So the premium, and I will give them credit, I'll give travelers credit, I do recommend us staying with travelers. Um, the market is tough right now in the insurance because of inflation. We were able to, even after they raised our insurance, insurable value, like our buildings with inflation, it costs more to rebuild the buildings. So we want to keep our buildings insured for replacement costs, so we've had to raise that seven percent. So even with that seven percent, um, insured value increase, the premium stayed pretty much level with that. So we paid one million eight hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars last year, this renewal is two million four thousand five fifty-three. Which is a hundred nineteen thousand four hundred eighty-one dollar increase, which is six point three five percent, but our insured value went up six point four percent. So you see, the rate actually stayed about the same. So, um, unless, we'll open it up for questions, but it's my recommendation. Uh, Travelers has been with us through some, uh, serious lawsuits, as y'all know, uh, their service has been outstanding. And, uh, they're a solid company, one of the biggest companies in the world, um, my recommendation to the board is that we, you know, keep this policy for another year.
I agree with you.
Do you need a motion?
A, a motion to approve the renewal, and, uh, and then we'll discuss more if needed, okay?
Second.
So we got a motion to approve this renewal with Travelers Insurance by Alderman Gallagher, second by Alderman Payne, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution for approval of DeSoto County tax assessment rolls for South Haven. Mr. Nick Manley.
Yeah, this, uh, resolution for the tax assessment rolls just confirms the, uh, or we're gonna, confirms the assessment is set forth by the DeSoto County Tax Assessor's Office. So we'll have that in our minutes, that assessment is the amount of seven hundred and seventy-one million four hundred eighty-four thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars. Uh, so tonight, you just need to adopt this, to have the assessment on our minutes, um, as determined by the Tax Assessor's Office.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda is, uh, third addendum to agreement between the city of South Haven, uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau of DeSoto County and DeSoto County Government.
Yeah, this, uh, third addendum will authorize that, uh, the mayor to sign the agreement, uh, that'll authorize the, um, CBB board to, uh, as part of the, the parking garage is being eliminated. And the CBB board is, um, under fifty-seven seven-one, providing property, uh, that'll be used for the parking garage, but they're gonna get that parking, uh, that property ready for the parking garage. Which they'll then be compensated as part of the purchase, so since we're part of the agreement from the MDA perspective, we also have to be part of the agreement for the third addendum. We don't really have any action in this agreement, other than agreeing that that's what they're gonna do, so tonight, we just need to recommend, or authorization for the mayor to sign the MOU to authorize, um, CBB to move forward under fifty-seven seven-one. For the parking pad, uh, preparations in lieu of the parking garage.
I'll make the motion, second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a, a copier contracts approval.
Yeah, these three, uh, three of them, we can do them all at one time, it's for the HR department, parks department, and court department, uh, the parks department, the amount of two thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars and eight cents. Uh, HR department, three thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents, those are both with Nova Tech. Um, those, uh, the, uh, has add, there has been an addendum added to those contracts, noting that, um, the city is a governmental entity, so those, in those, um, terms which aren't binding to the city. Under Mississippi law will not be effective in this contract, and then the other contracts with the courts departments, with RJ Young, in the amount of two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. And RJ Young has made the, um, necessary revisions in his contract as well, um, from Mississippi law, so tonight, an authorization for the department heads of each of those, um, departments to sign the contracts and addendums as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores, second Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for surplus property in the South Haven Fire Department.
Yeah, this resolution would just surplus two vehicles in accordance with Mississippi Code seventeen twenty-five twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Now, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the removal of one of the entities that have been on our, uh, police wrecker rotation.
Yeah, the wrecker rotation that's previously approved by the board, um, authorizes removal of wreckers, uh, that have been added by the board. Um, so tonight, the recommendation by the police department is to remove Griffith towing, um, from the board for now, uh, based on the, uh, uh, fact that they, or based on the investigation. That they towed trucks to a Tennessee location, which could interfere with, uh, warrants that this, that are needed to search cars, because it's across state lines. And then also not being able to provide, um, information on drivers in a timely manner, and then also the, uh, this is, like I said, those are the, the two main issues. And then the other ones where, um, they've sent drivers and trucks that aren't authorized, uh, to scenes. So we need to have those authorized before they're sent to scenes by, uh, we call it by the South Haven Police Department, um, it's part of the policy. The board is the only entity that can remove, uh, the entities from the wrecker rotation, so tonight, uh, this is being brought to you for consideration and removal, um, by the board. Um, as recommended by the police department, and they can always be added back, um, but for now, that's the recommendation, is to remove them.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Just a reminder, a few years back, we had, we cleaned up our wrecker rotation, we had, uh, some entities that were on there. Uh, we had a, a sundry of different issues, but I know one of them, they were, uh, let their insurance lapse, there were, there were just some problems, and our police did a good job of cleaning this list up. So I appreciate our police standing on top of this, and, uh, uh, according to what, uh, we've discovered, I think this is the right decision, for sure. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a police department MOU approval.
Yeah, so there's three, there's three MOUs tonight that need to be approved for the police department, um, so we can do them all at one time, just real quick, I'll go through them. The first one is the MOU with the, um, Financial Crimes Enforcement Network, it sets forth the obligations by our police department to be able to use that, uh, that program through the Department of Treasury. Um, and it sets forth the obligations that we have as far as privacy and user, um, data, but it is an effective tool for our police departments that are asking for approval for this MOU. So they can have access to that information as part of their investigations. Uh, the next MOU is with the DeSoto County Sheriff Office, and that's to be able to use the, um, their, it's called their jail tracker and smart communication system. Which allows us to have access, um, upon proper, uh, granting of it, uh, for the DeSoto County Jail phone system, um, and we need it for investigations as well. And the, that's also requested by the police department for investigational purposes. And the third one is the, an MOU with the United States Secret Service, and that, uh, MOU will just authorize us to be allowed to get reimbursed for the purchase of a computer that we previously purchased under this program. So this, uh, MOU will finalize that, reimburse it for that computer, so tonight, just need authorization for all three of those, um, as recommended by the police department. Happy to answer any questions on each of them, but, um, I think Chief Vickers can sign each one of them.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for liens and assessments.
Yeah, this, uh, resolution will just authorize the liens and or assessments to be pro, uh, provided or, um, filed for each of the properties that we previously cut in accordance with twenty-one nineteen eleven. So these already had their hearings, already been cut, so now it's just, uh, filing these liens and assessments, so the city can collect, uh, the money that we, that has been allocated for these projects, I mean, these properties, along with the penalty for each of them. So that, uh, we can, that city can be reimbursed under twenty-one nineteen eleven of Mississippi Code.
I'll make that motion, mayor. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly, is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience that has a, or who has a financial interest in any of the properties who would like to speak? Seeing or hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a police department contract with RS Communication.
Yeah, this contract's just a, a contract for the fire and alarm and monitoring service for the SPD East Precinct, which is nearing completion. Um, so tonight, it's a new company that, uh, has been recommended by the, um, facilities department, um, so tonight, authorization for, uh, either the mayor or, um, police chief or the facilities, uh, Dylan, Dylan Brink to sign this contract. So, uh, it's been revised to reflect the, uh, language that's needed from Mississippi law, so tonight, just need that authorization, and the amount is forty-nine dollars per month.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Kelly, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. And then next on our agenda are amphitheater contracts with our, uh, bank, for our bank plus amphitheater.
Yeah, so there's three contracts, uh, tonight for the leasing and for the, uh, uh, revenue, uh, splits for the concerts, uh, they're for the Boys to Men concert, the Kids Bob, and the Black Crow concerts. Um, as you previously recall, the mayor has been provided authorization to sign these contracts through resolution already, uh, but since we got them on Friday, we just add them to the agenda. So we need authors, or, so we need the authorization to sign the contracts, along with including these in the minutes by the mayor.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a change order, extension for asphalt contracts.
Yeah, this is two change orders, both with Lehman Roberts, um, they're just term contract, uh, extensions for an additional year for the, um, asphalt overlay installation and material supply. No price extensions, just extensions for additional gear for those contracts, under the original contract awarded as set forth in the terms for those contracts.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution to clean private property.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we adopt a resolution granting authority to clean private property as presented on this date. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly, is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there any, anyone in the audience who has a financial interest in any of the properties who would like to speak? Hearing or seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Yeah, that motion carries. Next on our agenda is our planning agenda, our planning director, Ms. Whitney Cook.
Yes, sir, so we have one item on the agenda tonight, and it is a subdivision application, but essentially what it's doing is requesting, um, to design, construct, build, and dedicate a new city road. Uh, if you can see right there where the orange line is, it is proposed to be a connector road between Pepper Chase Drive and Venture Drive. Uh, the property owner of Wendy's also owns all the properties to the south, uh, from their standpoint, they're wanting to do it, uh, to help better market and create some visibility to that, um, to that piece of property that they're trying to sell. However, we did talk with, uh, Civ, uh, Civil Inc., and, uh, kind of discussed if it was a benefit to us, and, uh, from our standpoint, the, the planning director's standpoint, my staff's standpoint. Uh, it does improve traffic circulation out there, especially when you have some concerts going on, uh, helps alleviate some of that congestion. It's also, uh, being designed to, um, carry eighteen wheeler traffic if we so desire it to be, so there's fifteen foot wide lanes, um, on that property as well. So we see it as a benefit, uh, so the subdivision application in front of you tonight is not to approve the lots, they're already in play, but this is to approve, uh, right away dedication from this, from this standpoint.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number one on the planning agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hayes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
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 Yeah, and that motion carries, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is our mayor's report, got a few things to update everyone on. I did notice that, uh, Mark Merritt is our insurance broker, Mark, would you stand up, I just want to introduce you to everyone. Mark has, uh, represented the city as our broker for, uh, numerous years, and has done a really good job for us, he traveled to get here, so he was a, a couple of minutes, uh, late when we were talking about the insurance. But he's been heavily involved, working on our renewal, so he did a good job for us, we just want to let you know, we appreciate that. And if any of the board members have, you know, any questions for you afterwards, feel free to reach, if you don't mind, stick around for just.
Absolutely, I, I won't answer any question, I do apologize for being late, there's no excuse other than I couldn't get in.
Oh, wow.
Well, no, it's due to the safety and security, but I was a couple of minutes behind when I should have been, Mr. Mayor.
We'll forgive you for that, yeah. Thank you for coming, we do appreciate it.
Absolutely, I just want to make sure, uh, we want to be an open book, do you want me to discuss on?
I went over the, um, all the details that you prepared, so, um, they all made sense to me, I updated the board on the renewals, and so we, we selected to renew the policy, so I think. But it, since you're here, if the board has any questions, feel free to ask Mark. Or did I do a decent job? Okay, thank you.
We got two insurance guys up here.
Yeah.
Sounds like you knew your job.
Just maybe after years of owning your own shop, I imagine you did just.
I'm not, I'm not a rookie at everything, yeah.
Do you want to wait till you finish the budget to discuss potential?
Thank you for bringing that up, we did discuss extending the expiration date to coincide with our budget year on October one. So what we decided to do is, um, wait till we get past the budget, as you suggested, and we talked about, um, and then get that exact, uh, prorated premium to go from July one to October one. Then we'll come back before the board and get that approved, but I think, I still think that's gonna be in the best interest of the city in the future, is having that different.
It'll be, it'll help the board of Alderman make sure, getting away from seven one, to your point, Mr. Mayor. Quite honestly, the, the board of Alderman will see it well in advance of renewal, if we can move it off January, uh, uh, July the first, so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, um, we'll, we'll, uh, revisit that after we get done with the budget, uh, process, yeah.
That's perfect, thank you.
Thanks again for coming, we appreciate it.
No, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, on the other updates tonight, um, tonight is the, um, fifth year in a row. Okay, on the other updates tonight, tonight is the fifth year in a row that we've had the only pro tennis tournament in the state of Mississippi. So that's going on now at our tennis center. That's a big deal, a lot of, a lot of fans will follow that. It'll be big for a lot of kids, you know, who play out there, to, to get to see professional players on the same court that they're playing on. So hopefully, that will birth some dreams for some future tennis stars. So it'll, it's good for the city as well. Y'all know that, or you wouldn't have invested as much money as you have in expanding tennis. A lot of you remember way back in 2014, when we made the first decision to start making changes to our tennis operation. And then we got the new, the eight new courts that were built in 2016. Then we continued to, we renovated the pro shop, made it super nice, added concessions, just made it more of an attraction for people to be there. And then, as y'all know, now we have eight more courts that are in process on the hill. So right now, that's going to put us at 20 courts, which will qualify us for bigger tournaments. We always keep some of the courts open for our people, so it's not just about tourism. It's about, you know, service to our citizens, having our citizens a place to play. Y'all know that some of them are dedicated to pickleball right now. Pickleball's the craziest fad in America right now. So anyway, just kudos to this board for, you know, supporting the investment in our tennis program. And what is going on tonight is, we would have never had that, had we not did the investments into our tennis complex. So, great thing. Cherry Valley Park, some of you may have seen my recent public statements about that. We, I had asked Wes, our Parks Director, to help dress the entrance up. Y'all know that we have a renovation of Cherry Valley Park going on. We just redid all the walking trails at Cherry Valley. There's a, a new playground that's coming, that'll be done this year there with our Neighborhood Parks budget line. We've also got the, you know, the bike track and the skate park project that will be in excess of a million-dollar investment over there with our parks revenues, our tourism revenues. So having those things there are going to get this park going again. And that, as I've said before, it's just important, this park is so legendary in our city, and I don't use that term lightly. The amount of people that have had their lives blessed by Cherry Valley Park is countless. It's a part of the cornerstone of our city. I know some people that aren't as old as I am may not understand that. But when I tell you, it was a cornerstone to the quality of life in the city of South Haven, it was truly that. And we've got to get that going again. Obviously, you know, we moved the baseball operations in 1999 from Cherry Valley to Snowden. That was a good move for the city, the, the complex there is bigger and better. We made it all football and cheerleading. We're trying, in trying to get these fall baseball players to learn that they can do both, and play football and baseball too. And as some of y'all may know, I'm very opinionated about that. I think football accents and complements other sports. And we're a big baseball city, but I think that football could make better baseball players here, like it used to in the past. So I hope that we'll get, you know, football enrollment up and cheerleading as well. We have seen a little bit of an upswing in that, but we're going to continue working on that. But when we get these improvements done, we're going to step up security there. We're going to, we do have some challenges with ATVs damaging the park at times. Obviously, we have some vandalism problems there. But we're going to invest with some new technology over there that is going to protect this park. And the budget proposal that you're about to see, we're going to have some other employees over there that will be focused on Cherry Valley. We just got to, we just got to put our money where our mouth is, and protect that park and get it going again. But I think it's huge for our city, and I'm proud that, that we're there. Again, the sign is beautiful, it's just like the sign at Central Park on the Tula Homer side. It's got the, the arch, it's beautiful, great, great entrance to Cherry Valley. So go take a look at that when you get a chance. Striping of streets, we, on a lot of the big streets, we don't do that in-house in Public Works. We do hire a contractor to stripe it. So there are two key locations that have been striped, Baptist Memorial Boulevard, the entrance, one of the main entrances off of Airways. The road is still in fair condition, so we didn't, it doesn't quite need to be resurfaced yet. But the, the striping had faded, so if you go look at that today, it's got brand-new striping on it, so it's going to be really good. Same thing at Church and Airways, the double, when you're going eastbound on Church Road, to take a northbound turn left onto Airways, the road gets kind of jacked up, the turning lanes are kind of offset, so it can be confusing at night for drivers. So we restripe, or that will be restriped either tonight or tomorrow, fixing that. Yeah, that's a big issue there. But just so everybody knows, we do have a striping list, just like we do a resurfacing list, because all streets that need to be restripped are not necessarily time for them to be resurfaced. So we'll, we'll keep tracking that as well. Y'all know that we have our budget coming up, we're working on that process. And state law, you know, dictates the dates that we'll have our, have our public adoptions. Our hearing is going to be on a special meeting on August 27, and then our budget adoption will be on the 3rd, right, right, Nick? 3rd, September 3rd. Okay, so anyway, just an update on that process. But everything is on, we're on schedule, shouldn't have any problems meeting that. That's all I have this evening. We'll move on. Next on the agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, may we approve the personnel docket as presented on this date? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update. Mr. Nick Manley, again.
Just two quick items. First item is authorization for a special event permit for the Sam's Club Back to School, or Back to Class Tourists on August 8, 2 to 6. And it's a promotional event for Back to School at Sam's Club.
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Drew?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Lawrence?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And the next item is appointing Chief Vickers to the E911 Board and replace of Chief Makinmore. We have to have him appointed from the city, and so the appointment's recommended by the administration to be Chief Vickers.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Gallagher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Utilities Billing Leak Adjustment Docket.
Mr. Mayor, may we approve the Utility Bill Leak Adjustment Docket as presented. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?